Good evening. Let's turn yours off. Anyone else have their microphone? Is there... we have a ton of reverb. Does anyone else have their microphone on at the moment? I can try a different one. Bonne journée. Just so much reverb. I can try a different mic. Hello? No, it's pretty weary. Okay, so if I put my mic to this, you have so much echo. I think I should try a different... oh. Is that better? How about this? So I think that we have a choice, everyone in the audience. We can hear with this. We can try to hear like this. And this is the reality of where we are today in 2019. Because we have a very sophisticated sound system in front of us, but we don't have a sound technician unless any of you are. For real, I mean, it's amazing sound. This will be recorded. This is something that you can view after. We all recognize clearly with the efforts that we've gone to make this heard for people who might be hearing impaired. We have officially tried our best. Please... okay, or we can just all leave now and pretend that this is on purpose and all of our anger can explode now. Or I have another idea. It's also a good idea, which is that we also see all these tools. Hello? Yeah, I think that I can do this. So anyway, here we are. Welcome, August 29th, I believe it is, to the Planning Board meeting of the Village of Truensburg. And now we'll start with roll call. And me, Jessica Giles.
Gloria Romanoff.
With us also is alternate Steph Bailey. We have the deputy clerk, Morgan Wright. We have the village clerk, Tammy Morris. We have village attorney, Guy Crowe. We have a village code officer and zoning officer, Tom Myers. And we also have Colin Zalinski from MRB. We have many members of the public, which is wonderful because the intention of this meeting is a public hearing. And so, one thing we're going to do real quick is review the minutes of the past meeting, which are in front of us now. Great, all in favor of approving the minutes as written? Aye. Any against? Great, the minutes are passed. Oh, we have June 2. Okay, so that approved June 27th. And then, do we have July 25th? Or did you read... were you reading? Okay. Okay, July 25th. Great, so then, June 27th. Right. Great, okay, do you want to move to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Excellent. So, all in favor of approving the minutes for June 27th as written? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the minutes pass. Okay. So as is protocol for site plan review process that is then deemed to be subdivision, part of that process is to have a public hearing. There was an initial public hearing when this private project was brought before the planning board and the village. Since then, the plan has changed in layout such that this board, which I will remind us is comprised of all the members in roll call, said that it would be prudent to have a second public hearing. And so here we are. And the intention of that is you are all very thoughtful, engaged, important people of this village, who we are doing as volunteers our best to keep the village according to the comprehensive plan that is in place now and the zoning code that is in place now. And so, the research you may have done, the concerns that you have, you have a right, an encouraged right, to voice all of your observations, all of your thoughts. Many of you have been doing that all along, and that has been so helpful to this board. I will also remind us that you can submit your comments electronically to the village clerk, to the planning board email. You can submit your comments in writing to the village clerk by dropping them off at the village hall or by mailing them by post. That said, public speaking is not fun for all of us. Sometimes we get very red-faced. Sometimes we get very nervous. And sometimes we're afraid we'll run out of time, and so we push through. I want to remind you that three minutes is actually quite a long time if you've ever had to give a speech that was graded in high school. That said, well, there are a number of you, and I haven't done the math to see how many three-minute intervals would take us into the evening. I want you to know that if there is not sufficient time to hear every one of you in the span of this evening while we're all here, the public hearing can be extended. I will also remind us that "public" means anyone in the room, not at this table. You do not have to be a village resident to make your observations and your voice heard. That New York State is very clear on that. And it is important because we do not live as an isolated village. We are surrounded by other entities. And they are important. So I think given that, we have allowed for the applicant to give a very brief context because some of you have dropped in at different stages. And again, we are here to discuss the plan as it exists in front of this board now. So it is a courtesy to make sure you are all aware of what the topic of discussion is. Yes, Ms. Victoria?
Jessica, why don't we get a show of hands of how many people want to say something tonight?
Oh, we have a sign and sheet. Thank you, good reminder. There is a sign and sheet here.
But this way, we could see how many people want to actually make a statement, get some idea of our timeframe.
I think that if... I've got it here. And if you would like to see a show of hands for your visual reality, great. We can do that. Who wants to speak? I think we have... Forty-five? But it's okay. Is there anyone here who didn't get a chance to sign the sheet who would like to speak? Okay, we'll have Tammy walk that back. I'm not sure. We're going to let her sort that out. And I think there's plenty of time. She'll meet at the side table. You're free to get your name on the list. I think there's also members of the press here. And there is a recording. So as always at our meeting, there is a recording device. It's being constantly recorded. You'll see this meeting again. Okay, so we're going to reverse the applicant or leave the presentation context. Okay, I'm sorry. I forgot one of the most important things. What makes civics work is civility. So we have seen so many great meetings with such great civil discourse. And I expect nothing different from this. There will be no tolerance for abusive language to this board, to each other, more importantly, and to the applicant. Period. Like, period. But I hardly even need to say that to all of you here. Thank you.
All right. Good evening. For the record, my name is Adam Walters. I'm an attorney with Phillips Lido, representing the applicant. So from our perspective, it is wonderful to be here tonight. It has been a very long road. And an awful lot has happened over the last two and a half years for us, relative to this project. And a lot of changes have been made to sort of get this project ready for this public hearing tonight. As is customary, we do have a short presentation. And really, we are just trying to provide context for tonight's conference and public input. So we're going to go to the second slide. Here is the original project site. Based on feedback and concerns about the wanted access roads, 50 South Street has been added to the project site. So the project site is slightly bigger than it's shown on this map. Obviously, its location is key for the project. There's great water here and schools and to Main Street. In terms of the project itself, what we're proposing, this is a residential mixed-use, mixed-income project ceded on an approximately 19-acre infill parcel. We have a two-story, 40-unit apartment building, six affordable rental townhomes, 10 affordable for-sale townhomes, a nursery school, and nine market-rate lots with up to 17 units. Project partners are the Labor Housing Services, Sun Town Properties, and the Truensburg Community Nursery School, which will be subordinated by INHS. The goal of this project is to create an intergenerational mixed-income community where seniors can age in place or the workforce can rent within their units. And young families can purchase homes in a very competitive local housing market. That has been the goal since day one. What do we need by affordable? For the rentals, the cost of rent and utilities can take no more than 30% of a person or family's income from the income ranges of 30% to 80% of area median income. That comes out to approximately, on the low end, $14,000. On the high end, to about $60,000. So it covers a wide variety of folks, a wide variety of employment types, paralegals, adventurous staff, mechanics, food service, nurses, retail, anything. Project timeline. We have had 25-plus meetings with the planning board since April 2017. There have been three community meetings with two days of listening sessions, which were in May through August of 2017, four meetings with the BZA in January through March of 2019, approvals that have been granted, and milestones that we've had over the last two and a half years. We had the fiscal impact study by Comoid Associates, which was released in June 2018 and presented to the board by Comoid. We had the negative declaration of environmental impact on October 2018. Special use permit for the nursery school was issued by the BZA in March 2019. Variance for a front yard setback, reducing it from 50 feet to 25 feet in March 2019. And a variance for a parking reduction for the affordable rental units, which allowed us to decrease significantly the amount of impervious surface of the site. That was in March 2019. This is just really the concept plan as it was originally envisioned. So this was August 2017. This was following a number of public outreach meetings, those listening sessions. It was substantially revised from an earlier plan. But this was the Hamilton Square concept. You can see the plan largely looks like a square. That's where we started as we got through the formal process. That was part of the sketch plan application, which came before the planning board in August 2017. So the site plan as of May 2018 public hearing, this was based on, again, a lot of input from the community, a lot of input from the planning board. You can see the site has changed substantially. It's now an oval. The idea there was to follow the contours of the land, to meld the project into the site rather than just flatten everything and build around. The current site plan, this is where we've gotten to as of today. Again, we really have about two years of input from the planning board, a fairly extensive, robust backend for the community, with the board, with professional engineers, and with really the entire team. Regarding the next slide, we'll just summarize what's changed since the May 2018 public hearing and why. First and foremost, at the board's encouragement, we pursued two variances from the BZA. Those variances were designed to make the design of the site better. First, we got to reduce those front yard setbacks from 50 to 25 feet, as I mentioned previously, do it a less suburban feel. We also got a reduction in parking requirements for the affordable rental units. The BZA did a very detailed analysis and required a lot of documentation from us to justify that the reduced parking would work for the project. And we're confident that it does. The two variances resulted in eliminating an entire parking lot for the apartment building. It allowed that building then to move to the street. And then, it allowed for changes in driveway layouts and reorienting some of the townhouses. As I mentioned, we also entered into an option to purchase 50 South Street. That gave us an opportunity to make that entrance to South Street an actual public road because we met with a minimum right-of-way requirement on that side rather than hard to drive. It also allowed us to move away from 52 South Street as far as possible if that residence expressed concern about the proximity to the driveway. The nursery school obtained a special use permit after the board's request of parking and a redesigned drop-off loop were added. The new design now includes 22 parking spaces. We added a sidewalk connection out to Pennsylvania at the request of the planning board. The building details have now been finalized. Project applicants have committed to fiber cement siding and aluminum porch rails rather than the vinyl at the request of the planning board. Also committed to not install natural gas. INH buildings will be heated with either air source or ground source heat pumps. The INHS may participate in community solar, but will attain a minimum REE gold certification for the project. Architectural designs have been solidified and putting affordable and market-ready for-sale houses. We'll run through those in just a minute. The project name has changed, obviously. It's no longer a square. So Hamilton Square has been dropped. We were going with 50 South Street for a while, 40 East South Street. But we've settled on Crescent Way for the subdivision act. Subdivisions have to have names. So we're embracing the Crescent layout of the site. What a good feel. There's been a lot of focus in the last few months on the looking feel of the buildings on the project site. These are the affordable rental homes. Here's a view of the building. It is designed in a way to minimize the massing of the building, not have it look like one large building, even though this is all one complete structure. This is the apartment building. These are the affordable rental homes. Okay, more views of the apartment building?
Yes.
Sorry. And these are the affordable for-sales. More view of the affordable for-sales. This is the design of the nursery school. And of course, we have the market rate for-sale homes, some of the layout options that have been developed. Options for garages with, without, et cetera. Again, designed to be market rate. So the ultimate customer who would purchase that property and have a home built has some price. Thank you.
Thank you. One other thing I would say, and then we'll start. These sheets are in order. Yeah. Is sometimes it can be frustrating if you have a question that then isn't answered this evening. And I will remind us that this isn't a question-and-answer session. It's a public hearing, and your questions get recorded. And we incorporate them in our process and explore them. So it's hard, I know, to sometimes not get an answer tonight. But maybe we can manage our expectations and realize raising the questions is the purpose of this evening. And so, given that, Tammy, where do you suggest that the speakers stand so that everyone can best hear them, given that we don't have a mic?
Officer Smith has offered to take a look at our sound system real quick and see if he can get rid of the reverb.
I think we'd like to give Officer Smith a minute. Thank you. And so, these boards that you have here on the side mirror what was in the presentation. And the only handout this board was given is this presentation.
Yes, so we put up boards, just giving people another opportunity to look at what was just presented. But these mirror what was in the PowerPoint presentation on both sides of the room. These are the current site plans and what the feel of the building is.
What about now? Hello. Oh, wait, is that working? Can you... if I just speak a little louder, then you can hear me with no feedback? Yeah? Yay! Thumbs up and clapping. Okay. So then, we'll use this mic for... yeah, let's use this mic for the speakers, Tammy? Okay. Yeah, but that's... And thank you for the offer. Thank you for the offer, too. Okay, so I guess it's my job to call the first speaker then, which is, please forgive me about pronunciation. I not intended... Judy DeRentes, perhaps?
Yep.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay, so this is a general assignment sheet. Do you need to make a statement? Thank you. Sorry, Judy, glad you're here. Okay, Nancy Young. Thank you, Nancy. Nancy, you can stand right there. I'll come to you.
Great.
You have to stand up and talk.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for letting us have our say. So I'm speaking in a dual capacity right now. I'm speaking as a homeowner, as a resident on South Street Extension, and as a business owner on Hector Street. So right now, on Hector Street, there's an amazing ton of traffic, as I'm sure you all are aware. I am a massage therapist. I do healing work. The amount of truck traffic is incredible. I have many, many concerns about the duration of this project, about the increase in traffic on Hector Street, the increase in traffic on South Street, on South Street Extension, and on Rabbit Run. Right now, in the morning, on South Street Extension, we hear the buses. We've been hearing the project going on across the street, the construction. And I want to tell you, it's incredible at 6:00 in the morning to be awakened with the trucks coming. Okay, so we're talking about years and years and years and years of construction traffic. So I am very worried about the sanctuary of our house. I'm worried about my business because it depends on quietude and creating a nice ambiance for people. Okay. I also wanted to comment on... overall, I... My personal opinion is this is a very poor idea, this project. It does, despite all the efforts being made to the contrary, I do not think it fits the character of Truensburg at all. There's been some previous comments of it's a neighborhood unto itself. Well, it isn't. You're in a village. It would be in a village. I have, in the past, been an archaeologist. I have looked at that site. And I know impermeable soil when I see it. And I want to say holy ponds for rainwater, for stormwater, et cetera, are not going to cut it, in my opinion. Not that you ask for it, but I'm giving it to you. Okay. Also, I, in the past, have requested a $10 million bond so that if anybody's house is damaged during construction or afterwards, that the person can just go and have an easy appeals project to get their windows re-inlined, cracks in their house fixed. And I have heard nothing about that. I've heard interest from the board, but nothing has been done in order to facilitate that or to make it concrete. I know that in the past, Isica Neighborhood Housing has had to borrow money to do repairs on some of their projects. And I'm saying, well, that money should be upfront. It should be available immediately. It should not have to be borrowed. You should not have to scrounge for it. Somebody has a problem with their house, with an existing house. It should be taken care of and fixed. And I have not heard any way to address that. I don't see the money upfront, and I haven't heard an easy way for somebody to take care of a problem. The other thing that I wanted to say was, I appreciate all the efforts of Isica Neighborhood Housing to accommodate all the things that we've said. However, the underlying project, the underlying problem in my mind, I'm just about done. Is that this project is poorly located. It doesn't fit the character of the village. And I think that you should vote no. Thank you.
I think as a courtesy, we might ask that Morgan give a 30-second warning because if we lose track of time that way. Thank you, Morgan. Thank you, Nancy. Next, we have Nancy George. Oh! Sorry. Okay, here we are. Wait, okay. Thomas, who lives at 71 Kuga, whose last name I can't read.
Tom Hurst.
Thank you. Hey, Tom.
My name's Tom Hurst. I live at 71 Kuga Street. And I've been following this project. I've seen three name changes. And I'd like to propose that to help relieve some confusion about what it's called, just call it Claudieville. I think this project is too damn jammed together. And I'll tell you why. There are photographs from, like, the one that was broadcast earlier. Is it possible to bring up the photographs?
Maybe yes, maybe no, but they're on the board there. That might take less of your time.
The one up here had... Looked like a young person speaking to their grandfather across the line. And I... In the first setup information that was provided, there was a kid... there was a photograph of one of the buildings that had a kid in their hula hoops and kite. They were flying a kite. I've never seen anybody fly a kite in a 14-by-14 square before. I'm from Vermont, and it's a town of 700 people. So when we talk about flying a kite, that would be the last place we'd choose. Again, I'm just saying it's too jammed. The other photograph that was provided shows a person on a bike. And why would you want to ride a bike in a 14-by-14 square? You know, I'd want to go elsewhere. So I think the proposal that you'd be able to fly kites and ride bicycles is way out of truth. It's not anywhere... It's not anywhere near the truth. In Vermont, I was, I live three doors from the fire station, so I was one of the firefighters. Your trucks here in Truantsburg are at least twice the size of what we have in Greensboro. I'm not speaking for the Truantsburg Fire Department, but I would like to have you post a picture of the daycare center so I can point out some things. That's, yeah, but is the floor plan, site plan available for that?
I don't see the floor plan on this slide presentation.
You'd use that, the site plan.
Yeah, that's the building. I want the floor plan. So if I were driving a Greensboro fire truck into this development to respond to an alarm at the nursery school... Three seconds?
Thirty.
You'd find that all 21 of those spaces you have to back out of. That's a poor design. And I don't know of any other childcare facility where you have to back up everybody to get into the lane of traffic. And where would a fire truck go? It's all jammed up. One of the pictures I love is the one that has, that shows the stop sign, a sidewalk, the street, and then there's a curve. And then there's two cars, a bicycle, and, you know, asphalt type thing. So if you're a bicyclist, how are you going to get out of the way of traffic? You're going to go over that sidewalk cement, and you're going to go over that asphalt. And as a fire truck driver, I'd be looking for places to put the truck and be able to use that pump. And also, we need spaces to put down baskets where we fill with water and then reuse. And I doubt that you could get more than two fire trucks in and out of there before you ran into a disaster. To me, it's all jammed up. It's too tight. Needs to be opened.
Thank you. Please feel free to submit anything that you didn't get to say. Next. Nope, sorry. Janice Rosar. Sorry, it's Janice.
My name is Janice Rosar and I live at 13 South Street.
I'll give you your mouth.
Okay, is that better? We, my husband and I and our children have lived in the village for 34 years and that represents half of my life. So I have a pretty big commitment here to the village. And I've never experienced such discourse and dispute in this village during all those years. And it's very disheartening to me that this is what is happening. My concerns are the same since day one. First drainage. I think we need a lot more information from MRB as to exactly how this new proposed plan would work. I'm concerned about the dramatic increase in traffic on South Street. Very narrow road, already has a tremendous amount of traffic. I'm concerned that it's a massive project that does not fit in the neighborhood, neither in density nor in character. And I think that we need more information about the rents and the income qualifications for the people who will live there. I regretted this from INHS yesterday when I attended one of the meetings and I have yet to see that. What I'm afraid we're doing is creating a segregated, economically segregated neighborhood, which I don't think is, can be found in other places in Greensboro. So there are many unanswered questions yet to be addressed and I look forward to future public meetings where additional information might be provided to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Does this maybe say William Grove?
Grove.
Grove, thank you. Sorry.
Thank you for this opportunity.
I can't read people's handwriting very well. I do apologize.
My name is William Grove. My wife and I don't live in the village, but we own a property immediately south of this. And the concerns I have are it seems like it's a little smoke and mirrors game, changing the name and changing the design. This is the first one I've seen that shows a driveway extension that shoots over towards our property, which I, we talked about from day one. Well, day one, we weren't there. Day one was when she proposed the variance for the foot and a half access to South Street and it was granted. And we were kind of excited about that because we're not opposed to developing the area, but let's do it with an open mind here. And as far as the drainage goes, there's a catch basin on South Street across from the Methodist Church that collects silt from South Street someplace. That hasn't been resolved yet. And the nursery school, I think, has been looking for property for quite some time. And I think it's, you're playing on the sympathy of, you know, why would you take that away from the kids? You know, so. And then as far as the traffic goes, I was skeptical of the traffic plan that was proposed, the traffic study that was proposed or presented at the Conservatory because they seem to just rubber stamp the okay for the amount of traffic that's going to be there. And I wondered how many times the outfit that did the traffic study found in favor of the clients. And that was kind of answered when they, the same group proposed a traffic study for the garbage burning steam plant up in Romulus. And they said that a truck every, a tractor trailer truck every six minutes wouldn't affect the area at all. I find that hard to believe, but, so, I would just advise you to really take into consideration the drainage problems and the idea that this is a smoke and mirrors game. They've tried to confuse the issue, I think, by talking about setbacks and trim designs when they haven't really just solved a major problem yet. Thank you.
I think that we just, in this particular microphone, it feels really strange to A, hold the microphone, but B, to hold it close to your mouth. But let's try that. But also, invite, you don't have to come to the front of the room. If you'd like to, A, stay seated, or B, stand in front of your chair. You can do that. Oh, no.
That's okay.
Tammy, you're so used to reading all these signatures and I just really don't have to. No, we just did William.
Sharon Robin Hood. This is Sarah Adams.
Oh, Sarah Adams. Also, it's on a scratchy desktop. So this is about Ms. Adams?
Well, I don't think we use it. Thanks. Give your name. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Well, I'm going to talk about this drawing and I, so I want to be able to point to this a little bit. I'll try to speak loud if I may. Let me know if you're still having trouble.
Everybody typically kills off.
You can use that one, Sarah. Sarah, use the big one up there.
Or become real nice, Sarah, and I'll pay attention to it in the live recording of the meeting having started where it's 6:00, 6:00 o'clock and 46 minutes, if someone wants to go back. Oh. We're going to call anyone again in a minute. Okay. Oh, wait. Oh, this is in order. Okay. Glenn Miller.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for coming. I'm Glenn Miller. I live on Falls Road.
Mr. Miller, I can't hear you.
I live on Falls Road and I have a business in Truantsburg Village. I want to address the negative declaration that was given towards the environmental study because I believe that one is totally required in a project this large. I'm going to get into a couple of details here. I don't want to bore you, but prior to issuing any determination on the proposed project, the planning board must first comply with SEQRA slash VEQR regulations. That's the state, environmental resource, and village, quality resource. The process has been conducted to date as critically flawed and must be restarted because it fails to take into account the approvals necessary to undertake the project. The regulations establish a threshold by which the proposed action amounts to a Type A action. Recognizing that the village is a small community and any development could have a large impact, VEQR sets significantly lower thresholds for projects classified as a Type 1 action. The project meets all the referenced VEQR thresholds and is clearly in need of a study. The threshold for a Type 1 action is five residential lots. But here, the applicant has proposed at least 15 lots, 200% larger than the VEQR thresholds. In addition, the threshold for a Type 1 action is five housing units, but the applicant has proposed 73 units, 1,360% larger. The threshold for a Type 1 action is the physical alteration of two acres, but the applicant admits that the project will physically disturb 14.91 acres and result in impervious service of at least 4.63 acres. I know it's numbers and it's boring, but the point is, there's a threshold for the state and the village requiring an economic, an environmental impact study that was not done. And we can't even proceed with looking at any possible plan, drawing, or anything until there's a study that says whether or not this project should even be built in this place or can be built in this place. So I'm calling for that study to take place. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Next, we have... It's Ann Foreman.
I wanted to thank the Truantsburg Planning Board, first off, for two years and four months at least that you've been working on this. And I appreciate you being very, very thorough and listening to people in the community. I owned a house when I first moved to Truantsburg in the 80s over, almost right across from here. And I told this story, it's over a year ago. And when I, so, in my family, it was a big deal to buy a house. And I was the first one in my family to ever go to college, the first one to be able to buy a house before they were married. And so that was a big deal. I come from a working-class family. And when the, some people came and they wanted to put housing in back of our houses on Main Street, we were concerned about numerous things, a lot of the things that you've been hearing all along here. But I worked in healthcare and I knew that people of all abilities need a place to live. People of all incomes need a place to live. And so we worked with them, with the developers, and they didn't do everything that we asked, but they did quite a lot of things. And we saw that Truantsburg Estates eventually had, as far as we could tell, and I've talked to the neighbors up and down the street there and all around Truantsburg, most people don't even know it's here now. That was in the 90s. And I also wanted to speak as, on behalf of the Tompkins County Legislature, because I am the legislator for this district. So we are always trying to figure out how to get more housing in this area because we have a lot of people that drive into this area because we do have jobs. And we would like more people to move here for a number of reasons. One of the reasons is it's better on the environment. People aren't, I mean, I'm lucky to have a hybrid and an electric car, but most people have fossil fuel cars. And so we'd like more people to live closer to where they work. We would like people to live here and contribute to taxes. I'm sorry, it's kind of hard to hear because people keep commenting.
Let's be respectful of the speaker, please. Thank you.
You want me to stand over there?
No, that's, I'm sure they contain themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. So we would like people to live closer for a number of reasons. I said environmental. Also, people that lived here, whether they rent or own, would be contributing to property taxes, directly or indirectly, sales tax. And also, for instance, if people lived here in Truantsburg, they would be helping to maintain a vibrant Main Street because we've lost several businesses over the past year and our enrollment in the school is down. So I'll cut it there. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will point out that that was the first speaker that was for, clearly for, the development. And that is the first time that a speaker was interrupted. Just don't do that. Keep all those good things you want to say. If someone says something and you'd like to go to college and you haven't signed the sheet, come sign the sheet, okay? Okay, Tammy, saving me the burden of embarrassing myself.
Funny disambrae.
Thank you.
Hi, darling. How are you?
Walk, shall I be next? Keep going.
You good?
Yes, ma'am.
That's what I do.
I appreciate all the meetings. I appreciate everything that they've done. I love what's presented.
Oh, you have to hold it up.
Up closer. I appreciate everything that they've done, all the meetings. This all looks nice. I have a problem with the location. And I want to state that we are inclusive. We want people to come here. But I have a hard time at all these meetings when we always hear, well, this works in Ithaca, works in Ithaca, because Ithaca has bus service. Ithaca has all the amenities. We have to be thinking of the people you are going to put here. And my other problem is, is that with the parking, I was so proud of our board when they said, well, we only need this little bit of parking because that's all you need in Juniper Manor. And our planning board said, no, you can't compare Juniper Manor with what's going here. We're going to have people with more cars. The nursery school, it upsets me because I don't want to say no to the nursery school. The reason why I want to say no is because it's more traffic on that street. That's what we're trying to say. I'm worried about the drainage that's over there. And the biggest thing is, we need homes. And everybody's saying we want to house these people. These are rentals and we're going to lose them to Interlaken. That's where young families are going. If Claudie puts these beautiful little, like, ranches in there, like I thought we were going to go in, we'd be thrilled. Little starter ones that we have. We need homes for families or we're not going to have kids in the school. And I'm just saying, this project I would agree to if it was in a better site. So please consider it. There's been so many changes, name changes, variances that are a red flag. A lot of things are going to change if we say yes. Please say no.
Geraldine Keel? Or Kyle? I'm sorry, I screwed that up every time.
Okay, I've spoken here before and I've submitted, oh, okay, I thought I had it up, this closer? Okay. I've spoken here before and I've submitted written information before and I am opposed to this project as it stands now. I am not opposed to bringing affordable housing into the village of Truantsburg or into the town of Ulysses. But I have a problem with this project because it is too large for the site and I feel it is also too large for the community at large. It's too many people moving into this community at one time. We have been a slow-growing, organically-developing community. And now, all of a sudden, we are going to have 73 rental units. And I can't imagine how we can incorporate all of that in such a short period of time. At the same time, we're going to have four years of construction noise interrupting our community. Now, early on, the, one of the members of this planning board mentioned that, and asked, just because you can do this doesn't mean you should. And I'm quoting somebody who was on your planning board. I'm not going to name that person. I think the person knows who it is and a lot of you do, too. And that's good. Now, early on, the, one of the members of this planning board mentioned that, and asked, "Just because you can do this doesn't mean you should." And I'm quoting somebody who's on your planning board. I'm not going to name that person. I think the person knows who it is, and a lot of you do too. And that's good enough. That same person mentioned the elephant in the room. And both of those things speak to how I feel about this project. Because the zoning is behind the project and not before the project, and because of the variances that have been granted, this project is going forward against what people really, in this room, most people in this room, feel is appropriate. The other thing is, the village, as was said today, this is a combo of village and townspeople who are here speaking today, but the town never really engaged itself and the town community in this process. We've had to look, we've had to look to the village information, which was very often not available to us, to find out when even these meetings were taking place. Yesterday, I went to one of those informational meetings. I got there at 4:00. I walked in the door. I was the only person there. The meeting started without an audience. I was permitted to ask my questions. I think that this is a flawed process, and it should also be noted that a flawed process does not lead to a positive outcome.
Thank you, Caroline. DeeDee List?
Fish.
Oh, fish, I'm sorry.
Hi, I live on Pennsylvania Ave on the side, backing up to the property that you're going to be working on. And this, that area has always been a waterlogged area, a swampy type area. And to give you an example, I've lived there for 31 years now. And I have to make sure that my sump pump is working. This spring, with all the spring rains that we had, the sump pump gave out, and within a matter of hours, I had two inches of water throughout my entire basement. Now, I have a raised ranch. It's not as deep as some of the, as my next-door neighbor, who happens to have, have to have two sump pumps as backups and generators and so on. It took me two days to get the water, not necessarily out of the basement, but after we got it out of the sump pump hole, it continued pumping and pumping the, from water that's under the ground. And that was with, you know, the, all the rains that we had had this spring. And I don't see that stopping. And it cost me quite a bit because I had to bring, I had a lot of stuff stored down there. I had to bring people in to, to get it cleaned out. I lost quite a bit of stuff. And I know that my next-door neighbor, with the deeper, because they have a full basement underneath, they have to be on top of the situation all the time, too. And I'm just afraid that with the water, it never totally drains off. It takes me to midsummer before I can mow parts of my lawn, because the water just stays on top of the ground all the time. And I don't see it getting any better when you're putting a lot of concrete and asphalt and everything out there as well. And I, I just don't think this is a proper area to do this.
Thank you. Next, Deb Ock.
As the Director of the Truementsburg Community Nursery School, I'm excited about the opportunity for our school to move into an energy-efficient, accessible, sorry, I was farther away, accessible building designed specifically for young children, including safe parking and walkability to the Village Center. We're looking forward to the opportunity to welcome more families into our school and expand our programs while remaining close to the library, public school, and other important village locations. Also, as a lifelong resident, ooh, that was really loud. As a lifelong resident of the area, I support the project. The location close to the library, bank, and restaurants is ideal for walking, reducing traffic, and supporting local businesses. Housing density in the Village Center is more likely to lessen the pressure of sprawl at the edges of the village. And in addition, rental housing is an important component of our community, especially for young adults, new families, single parents, and older residents. There are many reasons for people to choose to rent over home ownership, and renters should not be treated like second-class citizens in our community. There are volunteers, store clerks, mechanics, restaurant workers, and childcare providers that keep our community thriving. Everyone in our community deserves high-quality housing. I realize that change is difficult for many people, and it's easy to fear the unknown, but I firmly believe that the Truementsburg community is big enough to embrace this development. And in doing so, we can embrace the new neighbors, coworkers, and friends that it will bring to our village. And lastly, I'd like to thank all of you on the planning board and the village staff. I've been to a lot of meetings, and I know that you've worked really hard to preserve the integrity of this process and maintain an open dialogue. You've asked thoughtful questions, utilized the outside expertise available to you, to your board, and I'm sure that hasn't been easy in the face of raised voices, recriminations, and misinformation that has run rampant. So kudos to all of you.
I live at 720 Searsburg Road in the village. And today I'm going to read a statement on behalf of Barry Strum, who lives at 29 South Street. Mr. Strum cannot attend this meeting since he had a kidney transplant two weeks ago and is recuperating downstate and is immunosuppressed, so he is unable to appear in public places. This is Barry Strum's statement. For 35 years, as a clinical professor at the Cornell Law School, my students and I represented indigent people in Tompkins County. As others will express, there are many difficulties with the proposed project, many of which I agree. However, my goal is to address the unique needs of the poorest of the poor I represented for many years. Based on the information provided to me some time ago by Alana Fast of INHS, the minimum income for a one-bedroom apartment will be $26,000, two-bedroom, $31,000, three-bedroom, $36,000. These income requirements simply exclude the poorest of the poor. Therefore, to my mind, labeling this as affordable housing is misleading. I'm not saying all the units should have a lower minimum income requirement, but I believe that at least some must have lower minimums. We, as a community, have a moral and ethical obligation to ensure at least some of the poorest of the poor are included in this mammoth project. I have heard from Ben Darfler, before he became a trustee, that he wanted a project that could bring his friends with similar income, but without the resources of his parents who helped him out to the village. However laudable that goal is, it should not be at the expense of the truly poor. I expect his parents, who I know, would agree. Similarly, I have heard that teachers, policemen, firefighters, and other public servants need affordable housing. There's that slippery term again in Tompkins County. My response is that if we paid these people better, as they deserve, they could afford better housing and to meet their needs indirectly by spending taxpayer funds to subsidize housing being built by INHS indirectly is economic stupidity. INHS at one time understood the needs of the truly poor, but alas, they seem to have lost their way. At one time, I was happy to donate to them, but never again. Beyond the minimum income question, INHS should take steps to avoid the project becoming a ghetto and having residents, and most especially their children, feeling stigmatized by living there. INHS also must address the need of people, needs of people with unreliable private transportation, which is true for individuals at the income limits INHS has. Real access to public transportation is a necessity. The claim that TCAT is available on Main Street is an illusion for a population that often has physical limitations of some sort. Until TCAT agrees to serve the project, if ever, INHS should be required to provide a shuttle service from the project to Main Street. So I ask the board to condition any approval of this project on INHS having at a minimum of three slots in each bedroom size banned for the truly poor, on providing the aforementioned shuttle service, and on taking steps to help integrate the residents of the project into the community, unlike Juniper Manor, which is clearly isolated. With regard to the last point...
Heidi, I'm sorry, is there a tremendous amount more? We can maybe submit the remainder of the written?
It's just a recommendation to, for consultation on how to make this work. And I will submit.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you for reading on the mic on your neighbor. Do you need me to send you a little? Camille Toronto?
Hi, Camille Toronto, Tamarack Lane. From day one, I've always asked for single-family affordable homes for this project. And unfortunately, there aren't that many. They have townhouses, they have rentals, but not where people are going to have a home, their home, and they're going to have the property, and they're going to have, they're going to have a stake in the community a little bit more than just having a townhouse. It's not going to be their, that's not your, you know, you, they, INHS will continue to own the property. You own the house itself. And this is surrounded by single-family homes. This is in character with the area that it's in, and it's also not providing enough single-family affordable homes, which is what I've said from day one for this project.
Anybody with that? I'm done.
I know, I usually talk a lot more, but my son was sick. I was feeling with drain, oh, the different type of drainage. Not this type of drainage.
Next, we have William and Alexandra Connor.
Want to say those two at the same time?
No, I would be able to hear you.
I think you can do it. I just find it odd to stand behind people and talk, so I'm going to move up here, if that's okay. So, good evening. My name is William Connor. I live at 40 South Street, sorry. Just want to read a statement that I've already submitted to the board. I attended the July Village Planning Board meeting, along with probably 20 or so of those other meetings they talked about earlier, where the applicant has responded to additional questions from the planning board and its consultant MRB group. The board has felt satisfied to take the next step to this public hearing, but they have yet to address two requirements of village law that I have been asking about since my first correspondence in May of 2017. So through the thousands of pages of materials, they continue to ignore the fact that this site fails to meet current village law that requires South Street to be 40 feet wide. It's village law, Article 4, Section 420, 2A1, or 2A1. South Street is approximately 20 feet wide. The most recent submission also shows the road entrance to South Street even closer to Schoolhouse Lane, and significantly less than the 500-foot minimum distance required between streets, again, as required by village law, and that's Article 472.8. It's about 465 feet, so they are well short. The applicant has recently submitted yet another set of updated site plans. The planning board has had extensive dialogue with the applicant, but no dialogue with adjacent property owners to this proposed development. Public comment sessions at meetings is not a dialogue. As a village resident with 600 lenient feet of my property boarding the proposed property, I believe it would seem reasonable to have an open dialogue regarding acceptable visual and noise barriers associated with the proposed development. Who better than the residents who have lived there, many for over 20 years, to suggest what may be done? Village law requires that new developments not decrease the value of adjoining properties. One condition the village planning board should place on possible approval is an escrow account payable to current residents so the property values decrease. The applicant's escrow account would cover the difference in value. I've seen neighbors struggle to sell their homes at going rates ever since this development has become public. INHS continues to promote the location as being environmentally sustainable, as does our county representative this evening. The facts do not bear that out. The reality is the eventual residents, like most current Truementsburg residents, commute to locations outside of Truementsburg for employment, government services, healthcare, and other social activities. If environmental, okay, if environmental sustainability were truly INHS's goal, there are several sites significantly closer to Ithaca that would allow these residents to drive shorter distances, produce less greenhouse gases, reduce the impact to the small and fragile Truementsburg infrastructure, possibly beyond the bus line, and ultimately get these folks closer to the services that they'll be using. Finally, the planning board has significant reason to vote no in spite of their tone, but they will likely approve this project. If there's going to be a court case, I suggest that they vote no and allow the applicant to pursue that course rather than the village residence. Thank you.
I didn't sign up.
I apologize. I'm glad to hear. Ed Greedle. There we go. Sorry, Ed.
I'm Timmy Brolab.
Are you sure? No, you're not. I've heard you.
You've spent about two years already on this object.
Please use the microphone.
I'm very loud.
No, you know.
I don't care. So key questions haven't been answered yet.
Use the microphone.
Are 46, 47 rental units appropriate as needed for our small village? Well, we've already seen that Truementsburg Country Estates has difficulty keeping the small number of units rented here in town. We've seen their blackboard out on, on Route 96 here. We also know that this main structure of 40 units is building this larger than Sure Save. So is that appropriate and compatible with a small residential unit, small residential area? I would have to say that most reasonable people would say no. Board has not evaluated the effect of this project on surrounding property values, but during my failed run for village trustee, I asked a real estate professional with eight years of experience in the area, how this would affect our surrounding properties. The conclusion was that there would be a reduction in property value of over $550,000 of surrounding property on South Street, Pennsylvania Avenue, Upper Elm Street, and the Tamarack Corridor. Similar, the agent indicated that rental properties within town would be reduced by 2% as existing rental properties within our downtown corridor. Would also increase vacancies within those existing rentals. We know also that the proposed rental properties will be probably 70% tax-abated. They will not be able to cover the cost of our providing services to them. So that means that taxpayers here will have to pick up the cost and subsidize these particular units. I've estimated that that cost would be $65,000 to $120,000 per year for every taxpayer within the village. I think there's a different question here, too. After 15 years, INHS turns these properties over to Tompkins County. We don't know what Tompkins County is going to do with them, at least that's my understanding, last understanding of where this is at. So I asked the board to review my, my village, Truementsburg Free Press article in May 29, or a, or a program that I believe would fit the...
I just want to say that it takes a tremendous amount of courage for any of us to stand up and be here, and it's really uncomfortable to hold a mic. So as frustrating as it is, and I'm head...
I just want to say that it takes a tremendous amount of courage for any of us to stand up and be here, and it's really uncomfortable to hold a mic. So, as frustrating as it is, and I'm headed towards hearing impairment, all my genetics say I am, and I empathize with that, let's try not to heckle people who are uncomfortable holding a mic. I've also made note that should we have another meeting that would require public comment with a microphone in a large room, we have a mic stand, just as acknowledgement. Next up is Paula Horgan.
Also, I'll try to speak slower. Sorry.
I'm going to read through my comments. I'm Paula Horgan, 355 Pennsylvania Avenue. I live across from the village dump where I've lived for 30 years. Because Truminsburg deserves better, there's little, quite frankly, I can find after, I guess, two and a half years that's imaginative or aesthetically and environmentally compelling and convincing about the Crescent Way site plan and its fitness with Truminsburg and the South Side neighborhood. When I look at this plan, rather than seeing a carefully conceived neighborhood, I see a plan that's superimposed and forest fitted on the land. I agree with what Tom said. It's jammed up. I see a plan that holds to an economic model, we've heard a lot about that, a plan that appears to be set in stone and that therefore squeezes and forces its overambitious program onto the site. I see a plan that creates a generic, characterless, isolated, as many people have said, ghettoized neighborhood that looks like a cut-and-paste subdivision. I want to draw your attention to a few points and ask you to refer to my letter that I submitted today, which goes into much detail regarding subdivision, site plan, and procedural issues, all of the reasons we're here for this public hearing. Fundamentally, the Crescent Way subdivision plan does not comply with Village's Land Use and Development Law or zoning code, and requires many more variances that it has obtained, which has been commented on by Phil Connors just recently, if indeed it were able to comply, and it should therefore be denied for these reasons and more. Multiple forced sale townhomes, whether market or affordable on one lot, is simply not allowable under anything but planned development in our code. The multiple townhouses you see on several lots would be impossible to sell, give title to or insurance to, and assess without being further subdivided. This applicant has done this before. They will be coming back to you for further subdivision to create lots which are now severely noncompliant with zoning and subdivision ordinances. The clustering approaches you've seen here include multiple buildings on a single lot, multiple townhomes with individual owners, reduced frontages. In other words, as in the case of Lot 2, that lot would actually require 390 feet of frontage. This lot and others are noncompliant with zoning. Lot 8 is inaccessible from its own lot to Crescent Way. It's just bad design. It's not allowable by code. Collector's Street code specifications have not been met. That's been brought up by Mr. Connors recently. Regarding site plan, I've submitted many comments. I will say that this site plan is incompatible with Truminsburg's historic village setting and its historic neighborhoods. It is more the materials that determine character and compatibility. It's the overall design of the entire built environment that combined in such a way that can be considered either evocative or respectful of Truminsburg's historic setting. The way things are conceived, arranged, and combined in this site plan is neither evocative or respectful. That's actually a quote from your site plan, "evocative and respectful." The devil is in both the details in this site plan as a whole. It is strikingly problematic. We've heard about it already. A 350-long motel-like building, 69 space parking lots, no generous transition and landscaping zones, a nursery school clumsily squeezed with a parking lot in front, big dumpsters in full view, a socio-economically bifurcated street and neighborhood where lower-income people live on the south side of the street and higher-income people with privacy live on the north side of the street. Thank you.
And Paula, you submitted that letter-
I submitted-
Today.
-full letter with about 27 comments on site plan, 14 comments on subdivision.
Great, so those comments will get recorded.
Thank you.
Sorry? No, I'm sorry. Tom Pepe?
Hi. Anybody hear me?
I'm sure.
I've been wondering why I called you here tonight. I'm just going to read the letter I'm submitting. For almost two years now, there's been a procession of numerous project designs submitted by the developers, many of which, if not all, have required variances, special use permits, or other accommodations in order to move forward, and to my knowledge, all of which the Planning Board and Zoning Board have provided, in my opinion, setting a dangerous precedent for future similar projects to follow. The list of issues and problems associated with this project has been well documented and seems to go longer as each new design proposal is submitted. While not practical to identify all these issues and problems in this forum, the following are a few which I believe merit mentioning. Failure to evaluate the project according to standards and thresholds defined in the Village Environmental Quality Review Law, VCR, as would seem to be required for a Type 1 action such as this. Large traffic increases 67% throughout the south side of the village on South Street and likely similar increases on Pennsylvania Avenue, Elm Street, and other local streets in close proximity to the site, and the safety issues associated with such increases in traffic. Inadequate street dimensions for South Street and Pennsylvania Avenue as collector streets serving the site. Flooding and damage and drainage issues on the site and in the surrounding neighborhood, which is already prone to flooding and drainage problems. Despite fairly recent variances granted to decrease building setbacks and development by 50% and parking spaces by 30%, the most recent project submittal shows an additional one acre of blacktop now proposed for the site, which certainly won't help the drainage situation. Insufficient turning radius for trucks and emergency vehicles entering or exiting the site. Inadequate street width on street from the site connecting to Pennsylvania and possibly similar issue on the street from the site connecting to South Street. Severe economic repercussions for the village if the market rate for sale units are not built and sold, as they are expected to contribute $4.5 million of the $6.3 million, 70% to the net increase in total assessed values- Light and noise pollution on the site and in the surrounding areas. This development is oversized, sited on a property with serious flooding and drainage issues, noncompliant with numerous areas of Truminsburg zoning ordinance, subdivision, and site plan regulations, and has not been held to the standards identified in the Village VCR law. Additionally, it provides few, if any, of the types of housing units identified as most desirable in the current Village Comprehensive Plan and the most recent housing study. Comprehensive plans, zoning ordinances, subdivision regulations, site plan regulations, local village traffic, noise, and environmental laws, and others are enacted and adopted by villages in order to, among other things, ensure that development in the village is controlled, orderly, supports the goals stated in the Village Comprehensive Plan, conforms to previously stated laws and regulations, and does not negatively impact existing properties and residences and the rights and interests of the owners of those properties and their residences. I'm hopeful that you will choose to protect the rights of current village residents, preserve the quiet rural nature of the village as noted in our Comprehensive Plan, respect the village zoning, subdivision, and site plan regulations and environmental laws, and conclude that it is inappropriate to approve this project as proposed.
So next I have Jack Katz. And then I'll come to the babies and see how you're feeling. Do you stand here?
I might run a little long, but it won't be much. I'm not going to talk about technical issues this evening. I'm going to talk to you and tell you about how I feel. I'm disappointed that our government ushered in INHS in May of 2016 and withheld that information for one year before the developers brought their plans to light. I'm also disappointed in the way the developers have split this community, whether intentional or not. They have pitted old against young, north against south side, and NIMBYs versus YINBYs. I'm angry that I have been called a racist, a classist, or discriminatory by Ann Corman and others. I feel patronized to be told by a former kindergarten teacher, Martha Robinson, that change is hard.
Jack, I'm going to interrupt you. I think the issue you might refrain from mentioning people specifically, because that does tip toward that I feel abused publicly.
Well, I'm just going to continue with my statement, okay?
Okay, if you continue to list specific names of people who may or may not be in this room, you might suggest that you don't continue to read it.
Well, is that a part of your rules?
It's a part of this notion of tipping over, and I know you don't ever mean to be abusive or to call someone else in public when they aren't allowed to speak for themselves, or would you want someone to treat you thusly?
Okay, I'll refrain from that. If they're in the room, can I mention their name?
They can't speak back. It's a free-
Well, you know, we haven't been able to speak back either. But anyhow, I'll continue.
Oh, I'm not going to take this out at this time, don't worry.
I'm amazed that the Planning Board hasn't taken comments by the people to heart, the people of Truminsburg, but only listened to the verbiage that was put out by the developers and the lawyer from Buffalo. I'm astonished that you will approve a plan that is so mundane and contrary to our Comprehensive Plan. Over the course of two and a half years, the developers have tried to turn a pig's ear into a silk purse. I was outraged during the seeker vote, zoning officer, Mr. Schneider, who had the most basic tools to examine significance of impact, was completely cut off by the INHS lawyer, and he stood up and said, "No, no, no, no," to avoid having to complete an EIS. Our own VCR was totally ignored during the process. I'm weary of being ignored by both the Planning Board and the BCA. All anyone wanted to do was have a chance to have some input into this process, and every attempt was either rebuffed or sloughed off.
We're adding 30 seconds now.
Okay. I was livid when the BCA approved the setback variance minutes after the public hearing ended, not taking into consideration anything that was said. They completely denigrated the purpose of a public hearing and the reason for it to exist. By far, the things that have affected me most are very personal. Some friends of 20 years or more are gone. Neighbors look at each other differently, not often friendly. The village has lost the sense of community. My wife and I feel our quality of life is severely diminished. We look at each other and say, "This is ruining our lives." Many others feel the same way, and after two and a half years, we don't want to feel this way anymore. This war of attrition has ground most people who are against this down very hard. I don't think the developers care one whit about Truminsburg, and when they go home every day, we stay here, and we will suffer the consequences of this forever. One more sentence. One more sentence. And we are your friends and your neighbors, and please listen and hear what we are saying.
Susan Lewinsky? Scarlett's Civilist for- love it. We're going to let Ms. Lewinsky, who needs to get home, speak, and so you're all welcome to carry on conversations outside safely. Thank you.
As uncomfortable as this is, I'm going to stand up here, because I want you to hear me, and I want you to see me. I keep coming to these, and I don't feel I've been heard yet or acknowledged. I want you to know how important it is for me to be here. I had to take three hours off of work to make this meeting. I had to align lots of people to make this happen. I'm a single mom, so for me to take three hours off of work is huge. I have a family member on their deathbed. I had to leave them to come here, because I want you to hear how dire this is. I'm 100% for this project. I'm 1,000% against the location. It's a safety issue. I'm a mom. I live right there on South Street. I invite all of you to come over and spend a day in the life of South Street. That street is too narrow. I have a family member who was hit and killed as a 12-year-old. I know what I'm talking about, because I'm a mom, and I've lived through that. I want you to hear me. This is a safety issue. This project needs to happen. It can't happen there. All those kids that walk from the development, they have to cross that street. You're adding 100 cars. The street already is so skinny. When a garbage truck is on the side of the street, we have people trying to go around it. I've seen accidents almost happen. I've seen kids in the grass with their scooters yelling at cars that almost hit them. There's dogs in the road. There's bicycles. They don't use the sidewalk that was put in. There's still people in that road with the cars going by. You can't add another 100, 200 cars to this. Somebody's going to get hurt. And at the end of the day, I hate public speaking. I had to come here because when somebody gets hurt, if you do this project, it's only a matter of time. I won't be able to sleep knowing I didn't come here and say this. I want you guys to be able to say, "I heard that lady." If you can still put this through, knowing that you heard me and you made that choice, guilt will be on you. I- thank you.
I would like to express appreciation to the Planning Board for the massive effort and meticulous care that they have taken in their review of the Crescent Way project. In spite of strongly voiced opinions, both in favor of and in opposition to the project, the Board has not lost sight of its mandate to make a recommendation to the trustees, I think that's right, that follows state and village law and the existing zoning regulations. I trust the Planning Board to make the appropriate recommendation in accordance with this mandate. The Board should truly be commended for its service. Thank you. I would also like to acknowledge the cooperative spirit that the developer has shown by making extensive changes to their plan in response to suggestions from members of the community. They've made every effort to do their research and to answer questions from the Planning Board and the community. Change is a challenge, but change is inevitable. Let's keep Truminsburg moving forward by embracing the many positive changes that this project will ultimately bring to the entire village. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rick Darfler. I want to speak in favor of the project. I believe that this project has been looked at in great detail, and the developers have been working diligently with the village to make this a good project that we can look back on in a few years and say, "Now, that was well done, and it was thoughtful, and it was deliberated." And I'm excited about the fact that we'll include the TCNS, the childcare, into the project, so that they're off Main Street and off of a very dangerous situation, and have the classrooms that were designed with children in mind and are all handicap accessible. So I thank the Planning Board for all their work, and I'm also excited about the fact that, speaking as a Board member of Solar Tompkins and Heat Smart, that this is going to be a fossil-fuel-free facility, which we need more of in this. And we've shown, the Village Board has shown their desire to do that, as well as the town of Ulysses. So, I'm in favor of the project, and I look forward to the outcome of it and how it will impact Truminsburg all for the better. Thank you.
We have two more guesses, and then I'll come and ask the babies. Daniel, is he?
Yeah, I'm coming. I just asked your involvement, so I don't like to start.
Oh, no, it doesn't-
Oh, no, it doesn't start until you...
Time doesn't start until you're creating, and I don't know the back of your hat if those are not the problem. And I have the microphone. Or maybe I know.
Our colleagues from Project Red and Blue, so I brought...
Please, if I knew six of us, absolutely. 15 seconds of what it sounds like in my house, 46 South Street.
Do you use the microphone, please?
Danny Ann, you have the microphone!
Okay, so she's got some, we can have the mic.
I tried.
Oh, no, I know, she was excited. It's hard, public speaking with a presentation, it's hard. So Danny Ann has brought what she would like us to hear is reporting of traffic, and then she has some comments. Yeah, did I recommend you? Okay.
Hi, my name is Danny Ann Mizzi, and I moved here one year ago from North Carolina. And when I closed on my house at 46 South Street, I felt like I had won the lottery. I could have lived anywhere in a reasonable commuting distance of my job at Cornell, and I chose Tru Mansburg for its quiet rural character. And I love the idea of a right-size, sustainable development right across the street from me. Right size, that's really important. So my letter has a lot of different points in it, but the point I want to make today is why I think it's really fair that you hold to the law that all the construction should take no more than two years. And I'm gonna look at each one of you and ask you to show as much love to the current residents as you are thinking about showing to the future residents.
Wait, before you push play, because I don't know what the speaker will do. I do want to recognize that it may be louder. If it's really loud and offensive and we're all terrified and people are paying their hands to have this, we're gonna ask you to stop playing it, because it's a speaker of something you're recording, right? Okay, thank you.
This is my house this morning.
This was reported in U Street?
Yeah. I did it about 8:30, when the buses were rolling, rocking and rolling. Okay.
Mr. Mike, clearly. But the mic...
I was away from my time, nine minutes of construction, it's been four to 10 years. It's 10 years.
So when we talk about impacts, this is an impact. And I want you to consider not granting them more than two years. Get all of this construction done in two years. That is a long time to live with that. Seven in the morning till nine at night, seven days a week. That's the ordinance.
Kids, don't play that next time. Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Hi, I'm Tammy.
Hey, Jess.
Jeff Ry.
Hello, Jeff Ry, 56 South Street. I live on the far south corner of the lot, near the wettest part of some of the lots. And usually, like other people have talked about, have the wet backyard for a large portion of time in the spring and the fall. So major concerns about a bunch of things. But we're gonna start with some of the things that you may look at some of these plans in here and note that you would expect there would be, one, a lot more trees and things like that, and a lot more things between my property, back here in the corner, off of the hook there, to actually block what could be light, noise, and all the other things that are gonna go down. I agree with Danny Ann. I'm adjacent to the lot, so I'm not even across the street, beyond two houses, across the street, tree walls or nothing. I am right there on top of that property. So, big impact, oh yeah. The project will also result in significant adverse effects in community character and noise and light from the project, significant adverse impact on adjacent residents, for sure. Okay, we can talk about how long the building's gonna be, how painful it's gonna be, the dust, the trucks, the noise, the noise, the noise, the noise. But there's also gonna be light issues. There's also gonna be, I don't think they've really addressed the light issues. I don't think we've really seen what a cross-section of this looks like at night. I don't think if you look at this hammerhead turnaround, where you have to cut behind my home, hook a hard left, and then hook down along the back of South Street homes with all that traffic coming in that 67, 69, 70, 70 parking lot, parked car structure, it looks like all the time, on a regular basis going in and out, particularly at night, sweeping across the South Street properties on my corner. We gonna build a fence? Who's gonna pay for my fence? You gonna build more out there? Are you gonna snowplow off of that turnaround and add more water really close to a wetland that is my backyard, and the wetland is slightly adjacent to my backyard, that has been proven for two and a half years, you can't put anything really close to the property line that runs up and down the side where I'm on the far corner? It is really, really difficult to understand all of this and this new fancy stormwater system, unproven and all these things that I keep hearing about, that is ridiculous, and you hear all what's going on. This design is just simply flawed, overbuilt, overridiculous, on top of our properties in the backyards and things like that that look right into this beautiful gorgeous safe field right now in the quiet, and it's simply gonna go away. And it's not very easy to see that there will be problems with the building. It will be difficult, it will not be perfect. We caught even, when they were checking the water table, the truck got stuck out there when they were doing that, when they were checking all that. In addition to, there's a whole bunch of other zoning laws and things that are really being disregarded right now, that are in the village books, that need to be hard looked at in terms of long-term as to the way the design currently is looking at. That really, the subdivision issues and all the things that are supposed to be important to this conversation, there's a lot of things that need to be looked at legally.
Thank you. So we have one here, a baby from Terry.
I think I'm gonna defer Sarah, do you wanna go?
Sarah, do you wanna come up?
Could I go after her?
You couldn't, certainly. Also, if you're not...
Actually, I'll go really quick before Sarah, because I'm not... It's a fire pitch. Unless she's ready to go before you.
Terry, I'll come right back to you.
You just hide over it.
Well, I just thought I would follow. Thank you, Kim. Try to follow up on a few more points to do specifically with the site plan. This second, the second road in this project, you have to actually drive through the parking lot. These parking spaces all shoot their headlights in towards the rental units on this ground floor. There's not even enough space between the parking lot and the building to put any trees. The village code requires a tree for every five parking spaces. That doesn't mean you put all the trees on one side. You know, it's there to create some shade in a big parking lot. You've got dumpsters sitting around. You've got a dumpster in behind a three unit. You've got, this is a centered symmetrical design, but the entrance is actually off to the side. It's a single door with opening. The double door, where you might think you could bring in furniture and furnishings, is not off the parking lot. So, and there's really no place here to pull over, to unload. They had to extend the pavement here to make it viable for the fire engine to even make this turn. We have hammerheads that aren't allowed, are not part of our code. We have cul-de-sacs, not hammerheads. Jeff mentioned about the snow storage, so it's snow, salt, oil, gas, all right at the edge of the wetlands. There's some plan to, I think, regrade one or two of the smaller wetlands. This is just a bad design. I mean, it, you know, I know everybody's worked hard on this, and it's taken forever, but it just is trying to put too much infrastructure and units and people into a small space. And because of the wetlands and the hydrology, that's what you're faced with, with illegally sized access points, and everybody's talked about a lot of the other safety issues. It needs to be turned down, and if INHS wants to come back and start over again, it's just a bad site, it's a bad site. Thank you.
Hi, Terry Knabel. I'm just gonna play a little devil's advocate tonight. Let's presume this project does go through. I would like INHS to give us a fair answer on top, an answer, not the runaround we keep getting, about how long this project is actually gonna take and impede the quality of life for people surrounding this. They have to live there. Some of them, I'm not trying to be, but they don't have a lot longer in their lives. So they're gonna spend the rest of their quality years of life listening to this, and that's their, so be it? So, that's, we need an answer on that. So, also, in addition to that, I want to know exactly, how much are you gonna push for this project to be built at once? Are they gonna come and drop these apartments and take off? Or are you going to require them to actually put the project into full motion, the nursery school built immediately with the apartments, so they don't drop and run? This has to be looked at, and we need some answers. Apartment, nursery school, affordable housing. As he said, I don't know if it's et or pepe. We are not gonna get any money off this project from village taxpayers. We're gonna be picking this up until the economic effect comes in from the market rate homes. So I think we've been asking this and asking. Now I think we deserve a fair answer of what is gonna be dropped in this backyard, if this comes to fruition. And are you going to force them to put this nursery school in along with the apartments? I think these are things that the village and everybody surrounding this area deserves to know.
Well, I'm encouraged. I'm hoping maybe these other two babies want to be yeses. How about Arthur Mosher?
My name's Arthur Mosher. I live on Larchmont, and I have lived in the village for less than three years. And so I really don't know the history behind the development of the platte where I live. But I do know there are water problems in the platte where I live. And part of it is because land was allowed to be developed in the town of Ulysses beyond the village border, which then significantly impacted the water flow in the Larchmont-Tamarack neighborhood. And I'm very concerned that there's not a comprehensive plan for the water to flow off and not to flood people's yards, not to flood people's basements in the area. Thank you.
Rachel Kennedy.
Thank you, this is Rachel Kennedy, 18 Lake Street. I'm still in support of the project, still struck by how strong, timely, and exciting the project seems. I wrote before that I understood the need for any eagerness on my part or anyone else in this village's part for the mixed-income, intergenerational community with a nursery school to be tempered by a rigorous planning board process. And I think we've seen that. A thorough examination by the planning board of impacts that can be reasonably predicted. I continue to believe that we are better off developing more densely within the village than sprawling outward. I am still generally in favor of small homes, attached homes, small apartment buildings, and filling in existing underutilized lots. Density makes sense from an economic and an environmental perspective. I would love to see Tru Mansburg participate in the proactive, intelligent, purposeful sort of growth I believe this project represents. I have empathy, certainly, with the heartache that this situation has caused in our community. And I also believe it's responsible and reasonable, excuse me, for us to all bear some responsibility for accommodating a degree of change. Indeed, organic growth of a neighborhood allows for a more comfortable pace of change as well as the evolution of character, so difficult to define. But it seems that requirements for modern planned neighborhoods, such as stormwater management plans, frequently absent when growth is gradual, can provide a significant degree of security for those residing nearby as well as within. And this is certainly a huge benefit for our village in the long term. So I support the development for the much-needed affordable housing it provides and for Tru Mansburg's future well-being in general. And thank you to the planning board for your time and energy vetting all of these important details.
Scott? Well, there's some fun on the meeting. I will come. Sure? So Molly Wasey-Crause?
Yeah, I'll leave early.
Two left, okay. And yes, Scott Sears.
Good evening, Scott Sears, 355 Pennsylvania Avenue. There can be many different perceptions of what's good, what's diligent, what's responsible. And I just want to say, I hear no contest, and I never had throughout this whole process, of the need for additional housing in our village. There's a lot of questions about what's good about that, who the tenants would need to be, etc. But, that said, I want to go straight to the law. This meeting opened with a statement on the planning board's board being one of the primary roles, to uphold the law, to interpret the law, and the zoning regulations. I want to read just a few paragraphs here from a letter from Kathy Bennett, who is TBNA's attorney. "The project has proposed clustered dwelling units rather than separately owned lots for each townhome. Although creative, this configuration is prohibited by the Land Use and Development Law. This law defines a lot," and this is important here, "as an area of land considered as a unity and single ownership of record." Get it? Meaning that a lot is owned by one person or one entity in this case. "Applicant has not provided separate lots for each proposed separately-owned townhome or unit. Under applicant's current proposal, there's multiple lots that would all violate the Land Use and Development Law. Similarly, zoning ordinance prohibits multiple principal buildings on a lot in the R1 zoning district. Therefore, there are other certain lots which violate the zoning ordinance because there are multiple principal buildings proposed for those lots. Moreover, this fact alone renders the project uninsurable, unfinancable, and unmarketable. Specifically, no title company will write title insurance for a townhome unit that shares a lot with two or more townhome units because the owners of the units would not own the land on which the units are located." Get that making sense? The inability to obtain title insurance means that a lender would not finance a purchase of one of these units, because a lender would not be able to obtain the lender's title insurance policy. So accordingly, the proposed subdivision application, if it's approved, then the applicant will need to appear before the planning board again to further subdivide lots 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, 8, and 11 before the multiple clustered townhomes on those lots can be sold to individual owners. It would be wasteful, erroneous, and contrary to seeker and beaker for this board to go ahead and approve this, because it's so clearly inconsistent with your own laws. Thank you.
Now, those are all the names that were listed on the sheets. Is there anyone here who would like to make comment? You did not get a chance to write on the sheet. Rowing one. Good for you.
My name's Sandy Connor, I live in South Street, 40 South Street. No, it's not working?
Yeah.
So, I feel that the core issue for this that is a concern is the... So I feel that the core issue for this that is a concern is the size of this project for the location. And I feel that, you know, it's a given, the board is just looking at that as a given because INHS can't financially do anything smaller. So by doing that, it's like the board is just, that's more important for the, you know, for the board than the neighborhood, the people who live there, you know? And the other thing is, at one meeting, a board member mentioned, well, you knew when you bought your property that eventually it would be developed. And yes, we did know that. But when the person who bought that property bought it, she would have known that we have laws and we have village regulations and there are all these stipulations. So I think what's good for the goose is good for the animal.
We're not going to have repeats, but you are welcome to submit a repeat. Is anyone else? Sorry, I went to Quaker Church as a kid. You wait, the spirit goes you. If it doesn't, we're silent for a minute. Thank you, good. Okay, so what that actually means, since everyone here in this room who constitutes the public feels as though they've been heard, this closes the public hearing on 46 South Street now known as the Crescent Way application. Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion? Give a second. All in favor of closing the public hearing on the Crescent Way application? Aye. Any opposed? Great, the hearing is closed. Thank you, I'm so grateful for all of you. It's really good and hard, thank you. Actually, we have...
Hi, just sort of gently reminding you all that our board meeting isn't over, so you are not ever required to stay, you're welcome to stay always. If you want to have conversations, could you do it quietly, politely outside of the room so that we can do our old business and new business? Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, thank you, I can definitely explain what's next. So what's next and Guy? Oh, I need some silence, please. Oh, don't make me bang this giant thing. Oh, thank you. So Guy, interrupt me if I misspeak. But what's next is, I need some silence, this is important information. And thank you Scott and my friend in front for raising this. What happens next is the board deliberates on all of this really good information and all the things that we've been thinking before. We may determine that we need a working session. So we are always able to have more meetings, we're not required to just have one. And Morgan loves more meetings. So we would have more meetings, we would deliberate on the things that are brought to you. What we're required to do by process is make a determination in 45 days. Because this is officially the public hearing, in 45 days, the board must reconvene and make a determination. That's that. So a determination, there are different kinds of determinations. It could be determined to be disproved, it could be determined to be approved, it could be determined to be approved with conditions. A determination. And it's a preliminary approval. Right, sorry, this is the preliminary approval stage. Preliminary approval must be made in 45 days. Then, if some, if no changes, so if it's denied, it's denied. If it's determined to be approved with no changes, then you could move right forward to final determination if provided all the paperwork and documents. So it's very unlikely that that would happen, given the fact that we are wisely slow-moving in this process. If it's with conditions, then the plans need to be resubmitted, showing that those conditions have been met, and then a determination is made. What do I just?
There's a process for it and everybody's got their... First, and then either compliance with conditions, bill of designs, and if any significant changes occur, we get another...
Oh, good, really good point. Significant changes occur, there could be another public hearing. Okay, great. And now, the next order is, actually before old business, I want to endeavor to work with our clerks to get our public comments that have been submitted in writing accessible to the public so that they can see that. If they missed the meeting, so just so you all know, we really are committed to having it all be open and transparent. That's not going to happen tomorrow. It's not going to happen tomorrow and it's Labor Day. But we are committed, as we have made many more efforts, to be available on different channels through the website. Sent out links to the village website to encourage people at the town, to people on the village board to share them on their social media channels, and I think that that's been useful. Sarah, I'll take your last question.
Is it possible to have a hard copy somewhere available, maybe in the library for people that don't want to look at it online?
Of which? Of the application?
Of the application.
Yes. They are in the village office, but let's also shout out exactly how someone can come and look at that more clearly. All of you here know you can walk in and ask to see the plan.
The library would be better, it doesn't bother the village staff and they...
Let's consider that, the library also has unique hours. So let's look at it, let's also see if there's a, it's not a bad suggestion, Sarah, we'll definitely, let's take that, you're welcome. Okay. Yeah.
I don't know, I didn't actually notice that it was them. So I'm not trying to be glib, I don't know.
Okay.
Is that a procedural question?
Oh, sure.
I didn't hear, so maybe you said it, so I apologize for interrupting, but you said 45 days, you have to make a decision?
We have to make a preliminary.
Okay, and then, or if you needed more time, are you allowed to ask for more time?
I think, I'm not actually sure if you could ask the applicant for more time, if you needed more time and they could say yes, I don't know.
You can stipulate to extend the timeline if you wish.
Then they would have to agree.
And then just procedurally again, what happens after preliminary? Does it go to the village board at some point, just now?
It actually doesn't. So the village board has empowered this board to make, because it is not a public project, it is a private project. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. I didn't mean to interrupt, sorry.
So, well, old business. This is old. I think that unless the board here has something really pressing that they want to make sure we're prepared to talk about at next meeting, then you can say, let's not, for our old business. Likewise, new business, anything horrendous that must be on our brains in the next 45 days. Maybe Carver. Yeah, Miss Hannah's not here because you picked Carver. It's a girl. We don't, I don't know.
Girl.
The announcement just said Kit Carver, and I thought, well, that's very 2019. But it's a girl, and she's...
Named after her grandmother.
Oh, great. I don't know that she'll put pictures on the village website. At least she already has. Okay. I don't know if it's...
Nothing but...
I don't know. Okay, so is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor of adjourned? Okay, opposed? Great, thank you.